Thank you for joining us this evening for the September 19, 2023 Montessorino Special City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few principles to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom has been used to allow public participation with the special city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. Only attendees using Zoom application can use can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I'd like to call the special meeting of the city council of the city of Montessorino to order on Tuesday, September the 19th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Turner, you. Councilmember Craig?
Here.
Councilmember Lawhi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Present.
Mayor Mignolet.
Present.
Thank you.
We have one item on the special on the agenda, the special meeting tonight, and it's under finished business is provide directions to staff on SB9 ordinance modifications. And I believe our city planner has a staff report on this.
Yes, thank you. We do have a PowerPoint presentation also.
May I ask something?
Yes.
I just wanted to bring something up because I got a call from one of the residents in the public. And the call was about the public's concern that we are not taking COVID risks seriously. The concern is that certain city officials are participating in events or meetings, even though they are symptomatic or suspect that they may have COVID. So likewise, I was at a committee meeting that I attended last week, and one of the elected officials had COVID a few days ago. He tested negative but did not refrain from coming to our public meeting for five days. The state has guidelines for quarantine and isolation for COVID. On the web, it's covid19.ca.gov. So one, if you have COVID and have tested positive, stay home and Zoom if you want to attend meetings. Two, adhere to the guidelines for isolating yourself for five days thereafter. I suggest that we publish these guidelines at City Hall and perhaps on Nextdoor. Not only are we protecting the people we work with, we're also setting examples for residents. For example, in my case, I have to teach middle school kids every so often math and computer science, and I have to go to school. And so I want to be sure that, you know, I am not contagious to the kids. So I appreciate your efforts in making our meetings and City Hall safe and a healthy environment. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. So SB9 is a state law that went into effect last year. There are two parts to SB9. First is the ministerial approval that's required for up to two housing units on every single family lot. For existing lots, this means that up to four dwelling units are allowed, which would be the main house, the ADU and JAU, which are already allowed, and then the additional SB9 unit. The second part of SB9 is that all single-family zoning lots can subdivide into two lots. This state law requires that SB9 projects be reviewed ministerially, which means that no discretion can be used when reviewing a project and that only objective zoning or design standards can be applied. This is in contrast to the more traditional discretionary review process where development projects are reviewed at a public hearing with input from the public that can be provided before the decision is made. So the city council adopted an SB9 ordinance for Montessorino, which was effective in January 2022, which is the time when the state law was effective. The local ordinance limits any new building constructed under the SB9 regulations to 800 square feet in size, which is the state mandated minimum building size. Also, in accordance with allowances provided by the state law, the local ordinance also allows only two units on a lot that is affiliated through the SB9 urban law split, rather than four units which are allowed on other single-family lots. So there are a few reasons why things to the local SB9 requirements are under consideration. First is related to the updated housing element. The city council has directed staff to include SB9 projects in the number of planned new units in order to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation, which has allowed the city to submit a plan to the state that meets these requirements without using multifamily zoning. If multifamily housing is needed to meet the minimum requirements, a minimum density of 20 dwelling units per acre is required. And just for reference, within Montessorino, the Casienda site on Saratoga Las Gatos Road is about seven units an acre. Staff is not aware of another city that has been able to submit a plan to meet RINA without the use of multifamily zoning, so a productive SB9 program is uniquely important for Montessorino. The second reason for considering changes to the SB9 ordinance is due to interest for Montessorino residents. Staff has been contacted by many property owners in the city wanting to split their existing property into two lots for a variety of reasons. However, the current 800 square foot building size limit has been a deterrent for potential SB9 projects. And lastly, interpretations from HCD are another reason to consider changes to SB9. Attachment two to the staff report includes two letters that HCD has provided to jurisdictions, which also had a maximum 800 square foot building size for SB9 projects. In these letters, HCD has noted that such a building size limit is a reduction in intensity of land use when compared with the zoning district development standards and that that is a violation of the Housing Prices Act of 2019. HCD has required these jurisdictions to eliminate the 800 square foot building size limit and allow the building size, allow SB9 projects the same building size as allowed in for the zoning districts. So, tonight, we have a series of recommendations that are a result of discussion and direction that was provided at the August 29 meeting. So for the first discussion item, the staff recommends that the municipal code be revised to remove the 800 square foot building size limit for SB9 projects. At the August 29 meeting, the staff recommendation was to align SB9 projects with the same allowed building sizes as allowed by the zoning district, but there were comments made at that meeting and direction was provided to staff that this would be a significant increase in the building area allowed for sites and that a reduced allowable building size should be considered. So the revised staff recommendation is that we allow the building size that's allowed by the zoning district, but have that building size include the main house, the garage, and the secondary unit, whereas previously, the secondary unit was additional square footage to the main house. So this revised recommendation would decrease the overall square footage on each new lot created by SB9 by either 800 to 1200 square feet based on the zoning district and the lot size. The second recommendation is regarding the reduced setbacks that are allowed. The state mandates that cities allow a rear yard and a side yard setback of four feet per SB9 projects. And this is a significant reduction to the city's kinds of setbacks. Staff recommends that for an SB9 project, if the main house is constructed within these reduced setbacks and does not need the setbacks required by the zoning district, the maximum area of the house we reduce to its square feet. So, sorry, the next recommendation is that regarding the three-year residency requirement in the state law. So state regulations include an empty applicant for an urban law split intend to occupy one of the dwelling units for three years. Our current supplemental requirements for SB9 projects requires that we have a standard investment of the name before that has been reviewed by the city attorney, where the applicant is required to sign under penalty of perjury that they will comply with this requirement. At the previous meeting on August 29, there was a discussion about whether this form should be reported with a however, since the state requirement does not prohibit a property owner from selling either or both of the newly created lots within the three years, rather, it's an intention to occupy one of the units and occupancy can be met without ownership of the property. Additionally, the requirement is an extension on the part of the applicant that is not a mandate. As the signed affidavit report that's currently used has the same legal authority and enforcement as a recorded document, staff recommends maintaining the current affidavit requirement. The fourth recommendation is providing the noticing of neighbors of the SB9 projects. The current SB9 regulations require that two notices of a project be provided to property owners and residents within 600 feet. Other projects that require a public hearing have only one notification that's provided, and that is to properties within 300 feet of the site. Staff has previously recommended revising the SB9 noticing requirements to match those for other public hearing projects. However, there was concern that the 300-foot radius is not sufficient distance to notice affected properties. So staff is recommending to maintain the 600-square-foot noticing radius for SB9 projects, but to provide only one notice when the application is received, rather than two. Another issue that was discussed at the August 29 meeting is regarding tree removal permits. So state law requires that a local jurisdiction must approve a tree removal permit if needed for an SB9 project. As part of the initial discussion of SB9 requirements at the end of 2021, the tree removal permit requirements were added to the municipal code to address this state regulation. These requirements require two replacement trees be provided for each tree removed for an SB9 project. The municipal code also requires the replacement trees to be native or drought-tolerant species and to measure a minimum of 10 inches in circumference when planted. Another requirement currently in our code for SB9 projects is that the removal of an oak tree, any oak species that measures 115 inches in circumference shall only be approved with the denial of such a tree removal permit that have the effect of physically precluding two 800 square foot units. So the current tree replacement requirements are very stringent in that the two replacement trees are required for each tree removed and the size required of the replacement trees could require up to a 48-inch box-sized tree to be planted. Staff recommends maintaining the current tree removal and replacement requirements. And lastly, as discussed at the August 29 meeting, staff recommends clarifying that the existing slope density formula applies to SB9 projects that are proposed on a lot with an average slope of 10% or greater, which is the current standard for discretionary projects in our municipal code. The slope density formula is a municipal code requirement that reduces the overall building size, structural coverage, and impervious coverage in relation to the slope of a property. The properties with a larger average slope will end up with larger reduction in the allowed building size, structural, and impervious coverage. Additionally, staff recommends that SB9 projects not be allowed on the portion of a lot that has a slope of 30% or greater. And we just have now a couple of examples of, updating examples of eventual SB9 projects. And this is a project that we, or a site that we looked at at August 29 meeting. The allowances, the development potential for the two new parcels have been updated on this slide to show the, the strike through bullets for the new parcels are items that have been removed, I guess, from, from a staff recommendation. And the underlying text would be the, the new recommendation. So for example, on the two new parcel, for this scenario, instead of allowing a 1,000 square foot unit and a main house of 4,950 square feet on each lot, the revised recommendation is that the 4,950 square feet allowed would include the house, a garage, and the second unit. So in this example, the revised recommendation before you tonight would reduce the building area on each of these lots by 100 square feet. And then our second example is just a similar example, but on a smaller lot. So for, for this example, the revised recommendations tonight would reduce the developable area of each lot by 800 square feet by requiring the square footage of the smaller unit to be included in that is allowed by the zoning code. And then lastly, tonight, there are three options for council to direct staff to prepare an ordinance with the changes recommended. And we do have the schedule of what that ordinance, the meetings would be for such an ordinance. You can direct staff to prepare an ordinance with other modifications to the SB9 regulation or take no action. And that completes the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is just explain what the process is that we're going to follow, and it's kind of the same thing. What we'll do is we'll have council ask questions of staff. And then when we're satisfied that our questions have been asked, then we'll open it for, I'll open it for public comment. Every person will have up to three minutes to speak. And then we'll bring it back to council for a discussion. And I'd just like to confirm with our city attorney that we're just providing direction. We're not making a motion on this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. That said, questions of staff? And I'll, there's, sorry, questions for staff? Go ahead.
There's one small parcel map that you showed, the two parcels. One of the parcels, the size is going to be 2,800 and the other was going to be 2,000. Probably. And I'm trying to figure out why the difference in the amount that they're allowed.
So, in that example, the the parcels were limited by the maximum structural coverage allowed. So when the structural coverage on smaller parcels, the structural coverage may be more restrictive than the allowed building area. And so the structural coverage would govern for the allowed building size, and the structural coverage is a percentage of the lot area.
But it's not based on the zoning, it's saying it's the actual lot size that you're getting. You only have the 30% or whatever of the
Correct. When the structural coverage is more limiting than the allowed building area.
Are there questions? Councilmember Turner, go ahead.
I just wanted to verify again that HCD will count our SB9 lot into the RINA numbers. Is that correct?
Yes, part of the city's plan to meet the RINA includes a total of five SB9 projects, which include one project that is currently, is in currently in review, and then four letters of intention that were provided by other property owners within the city. As over the course of the next eight years of this housing coming cycle, any additional SB9 projects that are completed or building permits are issued or new units will count towards the new units to achieve the RINA.
And can you, can you go into more detail as to how they're going to count this? Is it one for, for an ADU and another one for a JAU?
Yes, so the staff recommendation is that two units be required on all lots created through an SB9 law split. So that will allow the city to count two new units for each SB9 law that's, that's building one.
Okay, so cities are also required to submit housing elements, RINA numbers, based on whether you're, it's for low income, very low income, medium, or higher than medium. How are we going to, how are we going to contribute to very low income and low income with SB9?
So the main house constructed, presuming there's no voluntary offer of a building on the part of the property owner, the main house would fall under the above moderate income category. The second unit, we would classify based on a survey that we would complete every year and which has historically been done for ADUs. So the city provides a letter to all property owners that have pulled a building permit for an ADU in the past year and asks them how they're planning to use the unit and what led to their charging. So based on those survey results of the actual use of, of the smaller units, the ADUs, and the second units on future SB9 projects, the affordability will be determined that way.
Okay, I, I guess I'm a little confused because I know that in Montessorino, you probably can't rent an, an 800 square foot house for less than $2,000. And that's not low income. So there is no affordable unit in Montessorino. So how do we, how do we overcome that? And how do we convince HCD that our part is in the right place?
So historically, the master number of ADUs within the city are rented for $0 a month. So like, for $0 a month, there is no rent charged. So presumably, they aren't used by family members or friends. And so that falls into the very low income category.
So if we were to rent it out to someone, right, and we were to charge $2,000 for an ADU that's a hundred square feet permits, would that fall under the above moderate? Because, because we're getting more money than, than somebody who's not paying anything?
So I do not have the current rental rates with me tonight, but part of the factor in the affordability is also the size of the unit. Whether it's a studio, a one-bedroom, or a two-bedroom. So it could be that a two-bedroom unit at $2,000 could fall into the low or moderate income category. A studio would likely be the above moderate category.
Okay, I, I would suggest that when we talk to HCD, that when they give us all these rules, we also push back and we ask them, I think you need to write things down for what is low income, very low income, average, right, or above average. And this way, later on, there's, there's no question about whether we're fulfilling our housing element or not.
Other questions? Go ahead.
My question, we, we spoke earlier today and I just want to put it benefit of everybody else. I wanted to ask a question again. In the summary, it says that, however, the maximum building size would include a garage up to 450 square feet. Let's say somebody wants to build a three-car garage, typically 30 by 20 is 600. How, how would that play out in this scenario?
So I think what we we best is if the council does want to direct us to allow larger garage sizes. And we can revise our craft language in the ordinance that would allow.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think allowing a larger garage, if somebody is in a car and wants to house three cars, it shouldn't be allowed a larger garage, but it has to come out of the total.
This is for questions, so I have no questions. Councilmember Turner, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, with that, what I'd like to do is open it up for public comment. At this point in time, if you're here in chambers, please approach the podium and state your name. And if you're appearing online, please raise your virtual hat.
David Proctor. And I had one, I have the printout that I got in the office a couple of weeks ago, and I just suggested, I, I think the intent is to subdivide the requirements. It's a bullet under number one that says, has at least 40% of lot area of the original parcel on a split. And I had made the suggestion earlier today. I think the intent of that was to make sure we don't make micro lots kind of a thing. It's the way I would read that for smaller lots, but for larger lots, it seemed reasonable to me to say the minimum size could be a quarter acre or 40% of the original lot, whichever is smaller, such that if there were, say, a two-acre lot, you could carve out a quarter acre for the new lot, and that's still a pretty big lot. We have coverage reserving in fact in Montessorino. So I thought that might be making it a little easier for people with larger lots than finding a line that works it out at 40% minimum. So that was my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
There anyone, any hands raised online?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. Anyone else, if you'd like to speak, please approach the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say I am happy with this conservative approach, and I think it's a reasonable compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. For Mary Lawler. Anyone else?
Me too, I have one. There we go. Johnny, babe.
Go ahead, please.
Let me say, well.
Yeah, so, yeah, sorry, I'm trying to drive there and pick up the keys. So that's why I'm cannot attend in person. So I'm, I'm driving and talking. So please allow me a little bit more time. So I, I'm trying to park and speak properly, but I'm trying to say that I'm a little bit puzzled about the modified recommendation from last time. We have a kind of consent on this. So I'm puzzled on that, the total construction area, which including the ADU and including the garage. First of all, this is not on the idea of have the same concept, same setup for SB9 construction. So if the splited lot is I-22, then it should allow the same construction area as another lot which is non-SB9. Meanwhile, meanwhile, the construction area also including the garage. So it feels like it does not encourage owner to construct a garage. So do we expect owner to park the car outside of the house, outside of the garage? Because this rule basically encourages Because this rule basically encourages to use the area as much as possible. And maybe we will just not build a garage, we will just park the car outside. Uh, well, this actually make the city looks better or worse. That's my question. So um, I don't know why we make such a modification. And I'm not sure what, what, what's this going to lead into. Uh, so also I want to add this. Uh, today, Los Gatos also have the council meeting, I believe. They have several construction proposal and four of them is um, is a builder's remedy. So that's not my, I'm trying to do. I believe that's not, none of the Monteserino residents is trying to do, but I'm trying to say builder remedy is real. So it's better we allow something more real and we can actually move forward ways. And we are in a similar and to prevent this happening in our town. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
We have um. Allison, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I can. Um, hi, I have a couple of questions. One is, what is the purpose of limiting the building size to one story? Just, I may have missed that. Um, and I also want to talk about the car sharing because we know, we, we understand that um you know, that there needs to be car sharing is certain about like a, a block or something away. And we, I just wanted to get some clarification on that. What, what's happening in Monteserino with that? I know it's happening in Los Gatos, but that's it.
Is that the end of your comment?
I think that was.
Okay. If you're appearing, oh, we've got someone in chambers. I believe it's former Mayor Juan Allen. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, uh, I just, I, I want to compliment staff. I think it's a thoughtful thing. It's, this is a a very hard issue for a town where you know, two thirds of the lots are, are acre lots and low density is typically why the people have moved here. And I think that the proposal meets the requirements, hand yet helps preserve the look and feel, if you will, of Monteserino. So I, I would hope that the council approves the staff recommendations. Thank you.
Doug, can you hear us?
Yes.
We have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, let's see. One of the things, um, if, if someone chooses the route of going through town council approval as opposed to ministerial approval, is there any plan to expedite that process? Um, so for example, there's something with the SB nine that's somewhat limiting. Um, can there be some way of, of using the, the regular town council approval process and expediting that? Um, let's see. Also, um, you know, there's two different parts to SB nine in terms of the approval process. There's the subdivision process and the building process. While you're working on this modification of SB nine, can, can you still submit your approval, uh, your application with the idea that you want to get it approved for the subdivision process of the approval process? Um, the other question I have is, is what are the different agencies? And this may be too technical, but what are the different agencies that you submit the applications once you receive them for the subdivision process as opposed to the building process? Okay, thank you. Uh, and, and maybe I could just clarify one of those questions about the one story, limiting it to one story. I get that if you're building next to a very large sixty-one hundred square foot um, structure, if the other lot is. But what if that's not the case? What is the reason why we're limiting it to one story if, say, there is a slope or something like that? It's not a enormous slope, but it needs some type of second story to make, to make it, make it work. Um, that would be my question or comment, so. Um, and just one other thing about car sharing. Is there a way, uh, I don't believe there's any car sharing business in Monteserino. Would there be some type of initiative or would the town council be interested in creating an initiative to develop car sharing? Because again, in the subdivision urban lot split, um, if, if you are within one block of car sharing, you do not need an off-street parking uh, space. You still need access for the fire department, but you don't need an off-street parking space. Thank you.
I mean, uh, anyone else in chambers? If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium. And if there's anyone else online, if you would like to speak, please raise your virtual hat.
Your hand raised.
With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. And perhaps staff can respond to some of the questions that were raised. Um, and I'll start off by saying as a comment, I'm very pleased to see that you were able to take our direction from the last meeting and were diligently to come back with some alternatives for us and, and what you thought you heard us saying. And I'm absolutely delighted. Um, I'd like to make a comment on the forty-sixty split. And I, I think you explained that the last time, but maybe you can confirm that that is by state, that's state driven. The forty-sixty versus it's something that Monteserino wants to do. And then in terms of the comments on the, uh, including the garage square footage, I think there was some scenarios that the public presented last time where someone could quote game the system. And this prevents that from happening. But what I think it does is it increases the intensity of the, of the density of Monteserino, which is exactly what HCD wants us to do. Um, and then with respect to the one story, I thought you covered that the last time, but if you could repeat that rationale, that would be, that would be good. And then the subdivision versus the building process, if you could speak about that briefly. Those, I think, are the, the issues that I would like to see covered as, as we, as we discern this and we give direction to staff. I, sorry, do you want to address those now?
Oh.
Yeah, please do so.
Yes, um, so you are correct that the forty-sixty split is part of the state law. So the state law requires that the lot splits under SB nine result in approximately equally sized lots with one of the new lots being no less than forty percent of the total lot area from the original parcel, which would then make the other lot sixty percent. So you, a lot split could have an under SB nine with two equally sized lots. So a fifty-fifty split or a forty, anywhere between a fifty-fifty and a forty-sixty split. Um, regarding the garage square footage, so our regular zoning standards do require a two-car garage. We provided with new homes and the area of that garage is included in the maximum building size allowed. So that would be the same for SB nine required, SB nine projects under the recommendations before you tonight. And then the reason for allowing only one-story building for the SB nine process, which is a ministerial process, is to reduce any impacts on neighboring properties without those properties having any input or opportunity to provide comment on the building. Under the proposed changes to SB nine, a project, a property owner would have the option to submit a two-story house through the discretionary process, which would be heard by the site and architectural commission. So two stories aren't prohibited. They just wouldn't be allowed ministerially. And then regarding the review process, I would need to confirm with the city attorney, but I do believe that the, an SB nine subdivision would need to be approved before we can take in an application for a building.
Correct.
So the, the processes would be consecutive.
Sequential.
Sequential.
Okay. Uh, I think other, yes, go ahead, councilmember.
What's the complication on that one story? Um, we're also looking at four feet setbacks, right? And so if we have four feet setbacks, it would be more prudent to have a one-story building because chances are you can take your hand, open your window and shake your neighbor's hand on the other side. And because, because you're, you're pretty close.
That's correct.
So having a, a one-story is more beneficial to the neighborhood. I would rather have somebody handshake me on the window rather than the bedroom looking down on my kitchen.
Okay, other comments? Vice Mayor Wolfshaver.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to bring up my favorite topic, trees. It says here that the replacement trees, if you remove trees, uh, you will replace them with two new trees. And the current wording says the replacement tree should be native or drought tolerant species. Acacia and eucalyptus are drought tolerant. We don't want those, right? So can we change the wording to exclude trees that are on our non-desirable list? We have that term, undesirable tree.
We did.
Can we exclude this wording that you cannot put in an undesirable tree? Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Lawrie.
Yeah, I, I think everyone's done a great job on this and they put from the public and everybody else has not. And I, I think really to keep in mind is what we're trying to approve is what can be ministerially approved. So we, you know, you don't want to be too liberal and allow everything because nobody's got a, nobody will be able to object to it. But from that perspective, keeping it as tight as possible will be helpful. Uh, combined with state law and still allowing people who have big lots to build on the, on the other, others' lot is, is helpful. But I think that's the great thing. And I, and, and this is going to be a evolving process. I mean, this may not be the end, the final word on anything. Uh, one, one thing I'd like to see though is on the, and I, I think the piece of this is really good, by the way, to, to make sure we stick that in it. Uh, is, uh, I still have a problem with an affidavit, I think. I'd like to see that the deed, uh, rather than an affidavit, because I think it puts a little bit more pressure on the developer. Because he typed an affidavit, it puts in a deed. And also the deed in the public noticing thing that everybody in the whole county can see. But if, if same developer comes across in a different city, they have access to that information. And also the title companies will look at it and say, you know, did the guy really live there three years? They didn't. And if he didn't live there three years and he's trying to do, do a sale, they may, their title department might just say, we're not going to prove this right now. We can't insure it. Because you violated something and we don't know what that means. So I, I'd really like to see that change of the deed rather than as a simple deed.
So the difficulty with that is it doesn't say that they shall live there for three years. It says they shall intend to occupy. They intend to occupy. And so that could be a variety of scenarios where I, I intended to live there and then someone offered me eleven million dollars and so I'm not going to live there anymore, right? Or it could be I intended to live there, but I got transferred and so I can no longer live there. Or I'm just going to rent it. I'm not an owner, but I'm going to live in it as a tenant. So it makes the deed restriction difficult because there are so many scenarios that really could technically comply with that intent. So the thought was that the affidavit would put them on notice, remind them of the obligation, but it would be easier to deal with. Again, and we talked about this the last meeting, there's really no teeth to that. There's not a lot we could do if somebody moved. Um, all they would need to do is they demonstrated that they intended to stay and ultimately didn't.
Okay, so I fully appreciate what you're saying. But I'm just saying a deed would have its own power because the public noticed, everybody else, every other city, saying, you guys keep doing this. And that, that may be something. And there, you know, the executive part of how you punish somebody for doing that, you're going to have the same difficulty, but I'd like the public noticing part. I also like the part that the title companies are going to be involved. And I'm sure you run into title companies who, you know, give a lot of nuances to different things and say, we're not going to ensure that, I'm not going to ensure that. And sometimes that will help. So you draft the deed as tightly as you can under the statute only says uh, the person has to intend to live here, then that's all there. But again, you don't get any more than that. But I think the deed would be more persuasive and the applicant is going to pay for the cost of reporting the deed and all that stuff. So it'll probably bring to them a better understanding that, hey, you're putting a restriction on your property as to what can be done. And somebody may question it, just like the intention from a artist's perspective may be hard to determine. From their perspective, they have to show that their intention was really a true intention and not a made-up intention. But that's, that's why.
Yeah.
Councilmember Turner, go ahead.
Yes, so I wanted to compliment staff on the good work that you've done here. Um, I, I made some three, I listed some three things that are, I think they're good next steps that you suggested. One is we're relaxing restrictions on SB nine projects based on input from a resident, right? The second one is we're making it possible to do lot splits and build typically sized home and residential property. Uh, and I know, Kristen, that's one of your comments. And the third one is we're taking, uh, we're taking steps to make SB nine projects more attractive to our residents, but less attractive to those who want to gain the system. Okay, now, having said that, um, no doubt we will have more issues in the future. So this is not the end-all. There are even more bills in the legislature. One of them is ten thirty-three from Bill King. And what he wants to do is to take all our ADUs and condemnize it. And what that means is he wants to be able to have the owner sell the building to somebody else and they keep ownership of the property. So here are some of the things, very subtle things that they're doing to, to bring up the density in a place like Monteserino.
Excuse me.
So this is not the end-all, but I do appreciate what staff is doing. This is going to be a long road. And I would like to, staff, to continue taking input from the residents, you, you know, and, and get transparency around this process. Because this is a very difficult process, not only for, for, for council, but also for the residents. We have to open up their, their homes to basically be unknown. So thank you.
Other comments? Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know if this is a comment or a question or both. Uh, SB nine projects require a thirty-day ministerial approval. And I guess the question, are we ready for that? If somebody comes in with a proposal tomorrow, will we be able to approve it in thirty days?
Yes, so our current review times are three weeks from the date of the application. Um, and that would be three weeks to either approve the project if all of them are cleared or met or to provide the applicant with comments of changes that need to be made if the standards aren't met.
Have we gone through that cycle once already or will this be new?
So we do have one application. So we do have one application that is pending for an urban lot split, so we have gone through that review cycle.
Let let me clarify, we have not changed our ordinance yet. So it's pretty hard for something to go through a process where we don't have the ordinance yet.
The um under the current SB nine.
Under, yes, under the current.
Yes.
Right. Is is the thirty-day requirement grant or deny the party, or can you do a three-week review and then get it and then take another three days to find it? Okay, that's cool.
So it's thirty days to either um confirm that the application um is complete and meets all of the city standards and approve the project or to provide comments back to the applicant where certain zoning code requirements are.
Correct. If you approve the, once a new SB nine gets approved, don't take any retention.
Other comments? No. Well, I I don't know if I'm hearing it correctly, but I just heard that we'd like to make a change on the trees. And other than that, I think I heard that that council likes the direct of the proposals that you put forth. And they would just like you to work expeditiously on this. Council, did I hear that? Did I summarize that correctly? Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry, go. You want to, you want to enhance, you want staff to look into the ability to to put something on the deed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have that for there as a default. There's kind of.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry, I I apologize for missing that. But was there anything else that I missed?
No.
Uh staff and and uh city attorney, Paul, do you have the direction you require to come back to us with an ordinance?
Yes, so we'll go back to site and architecture on the fourth and then to you on the seventeenth.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And uh with that, uh I will adjourn the special meeting at six fifty-one PM.